Anything would be an improvement.
Okay, folks, it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the February 13th, 2018 Wolfboro Planning Board meeting. My name is Kathy Barnard and the chairman. Let me introduce the other members of the planning board, starting down at my extreme right, Brad Harriman, who is the Board of Selectmen representative to the planning board, Paul O'Brien, sitting next to Brad, and then John Thurston, Mike Cotter, to my left, Von Dugan, and Peter Goodwin, Dave Allison Droney is an alternate, Matt Sullivan, our planning director, and Leanne Hendrickson, who is the recording secretary. Let me just quickly explain the process. I'll read the item into the record, then the applicant has an opportunity to get up and describe the project. Once the project is described, Matt Sullivan may add some comments if he feels there are additional items that need to be brought to our attention. The planning board members can ask some questions during those presentations. We then have to determine if the application is complete or not, and also if there are waivers needed. Once the application is determined to be complete, there'll be a motion to accept the application, and we'll vote on that. Then I can open the public hearing, and anyone who would like to comment on the application would have an opportunity to do so. Once we complete that process, then we'll close the public hearing and generally we'll deliberate on the item. So, most of the time, we do that. Sometimes, we're not able to. So, first item, this is a public hearing. Judith Oliver William Ionasi. This is a project on Fawnhaven Drive, a special use permit, Tax Map 231-33, Case 2018-01. And so, if the applicant will make the presentation.
Yes.
I think you'll need to turn the mic on as well, too, once you get started.
Yeah, this is 33.
Peter, could you turn the mic on? There's a switch on the very top of it.
There is. That's true. It says, there's a little green button light on. Does that mean it's on?
Oh, the green light is a good thing.
It's, hello? These things are terrifying.
It's working.
Okay, it's working. Peter Cooperdock, Fernstone Associates, soil scientist, wetland scientist, septic designer, been here before, been working on this road, it seems, for a long, long time. We had lot 31, 32, and 33. This is the part of a subdivision that was approved by the town in 1975. It has attached the town sewer, town water, and in the process of looking at these lots, it was found that they were mostly wetland. This lot is the last lot on the Fawnhaven Drive. There is, oh, I do have for, let's, first, I do have another large print that I can look at here somewhere, so if you guys have anything else to look at, if you lucky guys get to look at it, the guys need more help. The areas on the plan, can I take the microphone with you, please? Would you take the microphone with you?
Yeah.
Peter, you can pull it right out.
Yeah. I've seen that on TV, but I'd never done it. Matt asked me to highlight the map in a way that would be more readable. The red outline is actually the buffer zone, but you'll see that there is upland in this corner of the property, a island area in the center of the property, and then an upland area in the back of the property. There are two areas that meet the 30-foot setback from poorly drained soils. This property, unlike what Matt put in his planner review, is poorly drained soil. It's not very poorly drained soil. So, there is a small area in the far rear corner of the lot that meets the town setbacks from wetlands and sidelines here. Also, in the front portion of the property, there is also an area that meets town setbacks 30 feet from poorly drained soils. This yellow area is in this zone. There is a 20-foot minimum setback, 30-foot maximum setback for the front of the structure that's shown in yellow on the plan. And on this particular lot, we have a little bit of actual wetland, direct wetland impact, which is outlined in the blue here, and I have a little proposed bridge to go to a gazebo area on the upland area in the center of the property. So, this outlines a 34-by-42-foot house with a set of steps off the front and a deck coming off the second floor in the back. The proposal is to have a driveway come in on the first level. Wouldn't this be a two-story building, three-bedroom house? Correct? The builder is here. The wetland impact will be restricted by a retaining wall where the elevation of the property will be put up to a certain elevation, 562, 560, it's stated on there, and over the existing of about 558 or so. So, there'll be a two-foot retaining wall constructed, which will limit the extent of wetland impact, so that no more goes in there. This project has gone through the state Wetlands Bureau, and part of the process, there is a deed restriction placed on this lot to no further impact, no cutting of the vegetation within the wetland outside of the areas proposed. So, that's going to be a deed restriction that will limit any further impact besides the house and the proposed gazebo area. Everything, there is a construction sequence. It outlines how the process of billing this area would be conducted. The elevation, the pad will be created. We had a lot on Fairway View. Fairway View, is that the road? Fairway, Three Fairway was also something like this, where a pad was constructed, and then the building was, after that, was established. The building was constructed within it. So, this limits the area. In the planner review, Matt talks about this gazebo and the whole thought of the 1,800 square feet area with the gazebo. This whole mound of impervious surface or building exceeds 1,800 square feet. And he asked me today, where did that gazebo come from? And I just thought it was a nice idea.
Wait a minute. What exceeds 1,800 square?
The house, the deck, the steps, and the gazebo.
Okay.
Those four items exceed 1,800 square feet. And as he pointed out in his planner review, there isn't actually anything in the regulations saying anything about accessory structures, whether they're included in that 1,800 square feet or not. So, I've added that because you have some usable land, and I thought it gives people a choice on how they use the property, and they can enjoy this wooded lot with a little gazebo. And of course, if you have a gazebo, you're going to have screens on it because there's going to be mosquitoes. But that is the point of it. Looking, how many times? I just had some figures on this.
Can I ask you another question about the 1,800 square feet?
Yes, yes, sure.
You just said that it was more than that when it has the gazebo and the decks.
There's four items on this property. There is the house.
That cause it to exceed 1,800 square feet?
Right. With the house, the deck, and the steps, you're under 1,800 square feet.
Oh, okay.
And then you add the gazebo.
Does the house measurement include overhang of the roof?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, the house includes.
So, 1785 square feet, which is the total measurement of the deck, landing, and stairs, and home, that includes full overhang of?
Full overhang, a one-foot overhang of the house as planned.
That's 1785, and then the gazebo and the bridge, how many square feet is that? 144.
The bridge is 34 square feet. The gazebo is 144 square feet.
Well, so you're 178.
Yeah.
178 plus the 1785. So, you're popped over the 1,800 quite nicely.
It's over. I totally concede that. I wasn't even thinking along those lines.
If you were to, 1,963, probably, square feet?
I don't know. Matt came up with the figure.
I didn't come up with the total, but roughly, yes.
It's above 1,800 square feet.
Do you feel, do you feel that since the ordinance does not specifically address accessory structures, that you could, under the ordinance, have a shed on that upland piece of property right next to the gazebo and still fall within, under the 1,800 square foot?
Well, then, you know, I'm trying to limit the amount of buffer zone impact with this application and with that restriction of the amount of buffer zone that the application is requesting, then you wouldn't have room to put a shed.
If you did have room to put a shed, if there were another piece of upland property on this lot, hypothetically speaking, would that be justifiable underneath, under this zoning ordinance, because you're feeling it's an accessory structure and is not to be counted into the 1,800 square foot maximum?
Well, I'm not really sure if I'm going to be making the decision on whether it's...
Well, you're arguing that this gazebo does not fall within the meaning of the ordinance, and that's how you get around having popped over the 1,800 square foot. And I'm asking you, if there were other accessory structures on this lot, on upland property, would they also be excused from the 1,800 square foot maximum?
Well, it would.
In your argument, they would.
Yeah, right. So, you know, now it's the planning board's decision to decide whether that 1,800 includes accessory structures or not.
Right.
You know, I'm not, you know, it's something, frankly, I wasn't really thinking about the 1,800 square foot figure with this, and we could certainly eliminate either the deck or the gazebo and be under 1,800 square feet, if it is the planning board's decision that 1,800 includes everything.
Have you read the DES wetlands permit?
Yes.
The way I read it, in paragraph two, beg pardon, "No further impacts on this property outside of the building pad delineated by the perimeter retaining stone wall."
Well, they approved the gazebo. That is on the application.
They approved on the gazebo.
They approved the gazebo is on the plan, and the bridge was on the plan, and they approved it.
They approved only what's within the retaining pad, retaining wall and the pad. They're not speaking of the gazebo at all. At least, that's the way I read it.
Mike, they do reference it in the permit description area, and my assumption is they wouldn't reference it there, and it couldn't be located reasonably within the retaining wall, so I'm assuming they did actually include it in their review.
Despite what they write in...
Yeah, I think, I mean, because they clearly say here it's part of the permit that was approved.
Okay.
Sounds like a cut and paste, approve the gazebo in the narrative language, but cut and paste the actual text of the ordinance in another piece.
Could be, could be what they've done on that.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Where does, where does the water go? Where's all this water going to go?
Where's the water go? What do you mean? From the wetland, where's the...
You're putting 1,800 square foot, roughly, 1785 structure, driveway, things of that nature. This is a wet piece of property. Where does the water that was landing on that proposed piece of structure, where does that water now go?
Well, the buildings are designed to have drip-edge infiltration trenches around, so anything that comes off the impervious surface of the buildings is going to go into those, and that's going to go into the groundwater like it always has. The driveway is going to have a little bit of runoff that's going to shed off to it into the grass slope on the sides, and that'll end up into the groundwater table, and as it does now.
Yeah, but what I'm, you know, let me shorthand it. What I'm trying to ask is, are we going to see, or are we accidentally, and I mean accidentally creating a situation where we're moving water to a different piece of property?
You know, those things are really, you know, difficult to analyze, and we had a discussion back, was that last spring?
About drainage analysis?
About the drainage and all of that.
Did that a TRC?
That's correct.
The TRC. We did talk about this with the budding lot, 32.
Right.
And Dave Ford did a site visit of the area to try to assess the concerns based on the development of these three contiguous lots, and they all, they all outlet. The flow is this way. The topography go, the lake's up here, some, up here eventually, and all this area drains, and then there's lots on Clark Road, and there is a culvert under Clark Road between two of the lots on here, and all of this area drains into that culvert. And Dave Ford, you know, wandered the area and made a visual assessment that, in his feelings, that that culvert, that area was adequate for any kind of, in a minimal impact. You know, we're talking about a 10% of the lot area that's going to be impacted through this proposal, and his feeling was that a drainage analysis wasn't going to be necessary, that what's existing would be adequate to handle it.
Chairman?
Yep.
Thank you.
It seems to me that if this application continues with the gazebo as part of the application, that I think this board should reject the application at this point and refer the applicant to the ZVA for a variance.
If they, yes, that's what they...
Unless they decide to remove the gazebo and keep the application under the 1,800 square foot total.
I have just been told, flash news, that the gazebo is expendable. We can certainly remove the gazebo and therefore maintain it under the 1,800 square feet.
Okay, why don't you finish? You've got ways to go with your presentation.
Okay. I do, do I. I, I, this, this property, I think, can handle this limited amount of development, especially with the restriction, deed restriction placed on it, that it remain, the remaining areas be left in a natural estate, especially now if we're removing that walkway and gazebo area, that reduces the impact that much more to the property, so that the three-quarters of the property more, well, 90% of the property remains in its natural state and will be available for its continuing use that it's happening now. There is, there is an interesting feature about this lot that I just want to make sure that we understand, is this easement area. Part of this subdivision happened in '75. There was an idea that maybe this road would continue through, and they have this temporary, there's a dashed line here on both sides for a cul-de-sac, which is here, and this is, you know, the Clipper Home, or whatever, whatever it's called now, Wolfboro Bay.
Yeah, well, what's your point?
It's just, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, that was understood, what that dashed line, temporary easement area, was on there for. There isn't any building proposed in that area. It's just there, kind of a remnant of the original subdivision, so if there's any.
Okay. Can you speak to the issues required in the ordinance? Does the project minimize the detrimental impact on the wetlands? Is there another location on this lot where the construction could take place, where it would not affect the wetlands and buffers? You need to address those issues.
Okay, well, they're outlined in the report, but I certainly can, can do that.
Well, this is a public hearing, and so the public needs to hear the justification.
Okay. There is a series of questions that are in your ordinance about the, about the property, the ecological communities. This is a forested, poorly drained or moderately well-drained soils are on that. It, that's been described. The property impact area is going to be well behind erosion control devices with orange construction fencing around it to protect, limit the area of impact to that proposed. Obviously, the gazebo is gone. The project will be built in such a way to minimize any impact beyond it. There is no, there is a, as far as the proposed activity minimizing adverse impact of the capacity to wetman for fish and wildlife, there is no open water on the property, except seasonal puddles will exist, so there's no fish. Wildlife is the standard wildlife you'd find in any kind of upland, poorly drained wetland area. Nothing unique, no unique vegetation on this property. There is, as we addressed before, the increase in impervious surface on the property. There's going to be a somewhat, about a 10% impervious surface. It's going to be, have drip-line trenches that'll, for infiltration, that'll supplement the existing conditions in a way. There will be not any runoff flowing out into the wetland, and all runoff that's going to happen is going to be absorbed by the either drip-line trenches or the grass slopes on the driveway. That'd be the only other area. The, there is no perceived impact to surface and groundwaters, that everything that's coming on there, there is basically no surface water on the property. The groundwater is going to be absorbed as it is now for the majority of the lot. The part that's going to be developed will be developed by the drip-line trenches and the vegetated slopes around the area. Any construction will be behind the erosion control. The property is tied to the town sewer, so there's no septic system on lot to be, but, you know, so the biggest concern would be during construction, and that would be done by proper erosion control devices, supporting that native wetland vegetation. As I'd said, the, the conditions on the wetland permit are going to be written into the deeds so that the lot remains vegetated as it is now, with the provisions that unsafe trees, diseased trees could be removed, but outside of that, it's going to stay a forested wetland, except for where the building is going. There is, I don't perceive this being a big impact, you know, as far as like...
There's no other place, I think there was one other question.
Oh, yeah, no other, there is no other place to put this.
Possibly.
Reasonable location on the property to place this. Thank you. Okay, did I cover all those things? Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you for giving your presentation tonight. I got a couple of questions. I'm trying to digest your topography here, and you said on the front of that stone wall, you said it's a two-foot elevation, so that brings that up a little bit. And then on the front side of the house where the entry is, you've got a section of stairs that look like they go down. How many stairs are going down? Is that...
Well, those stairs are from the second floor.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
No, they're not from the second floor? He's the builder.
Hi, Bill Ionasi. The garage level and the front door level are actually only two steps off of finished grade.
Okay, so...
So, but you have, what Peter was showing there is that within the 20-to-30-foot setback, there would be a walkway to the front door off of the driveway. So, then there's probably only two steps to get into the house, the most three. The same would occur on the back of the house. It's not actually a deck that would be built. It would be the same thing. You would step out one or two steps. You would be in a grassy area. So, and if we did put anything in that designated area, it would be brick where drainage would go through the sides of the brick. So, it's not actually, we're not going to put concrete in the ground, we're not going to put posts in the ground. It would just be patio.
Yeah, okay. So, that's the basic elevation between the sill and the solid part of the grounds, a couple of steps, basically.
Right. Our plan, we do have a preliminary design, and it is a, you know, one and a half, it's a Cape design, but your front door is right off the, that elevation that you see there.
Yeah, thank you. So, with that, then you're going to have a trenching system that goes around your building. Are you planning a basement, or are you going to do a slab?
No, that would be either slab or crawl space, depending on what we find when we start digging. We just, we did a similar house last year at Three, at Three Fairway. We ended up with a crawl space and dry as a bone. We don't have any water whatsoever. We put the same trench to collect the water off the roof on, at Three, and we have absolutely no problems there.
So, either you have an exit there somewhere, or it just kind of goes down and...
No, it would exit, so the trench, typically, we would put a four-inch pipe in, at the bottom of the stone trench, and it would exit into the wetland.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't see a pump line on the, on the plan.
It's gravity. You don't need a, you don't need a pump.
That's good.
So, everything is just gravity.
That's good.
Okay, you all set?
What is the material of the driveway?
We would use asphalt.
Doesn't that increase the impermeable part of the property?
That's in part of the, that's already included in the figure.
Oh, okay.
All right, so we could, I'm not sure whether you could deduct this, the deck, so-called deck now, that it's not really a deck, so where it would just be patio with some brick. So, that would also help.
Okay, you all set?
I believe so.
Okay, any other questions, folks? Okay, we'll go to Matt, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't have much. I mean, my primary issue here was the 1,800 square foot impact issue that I referenced here in my review. I think the ordinance is... I think the ordinance is silent on this question in front of the board tonight, but I believe that based on the standards I outlined at the end of my review relative to minimizing detrimental impact and alternative location, I think the board has, has the ability to request that gazebo be removed under that provision of the ordinance and it sounds like the applicants are willing to, to work with us on that as well. I did want to point out just a few other things. Per the ordinance, obviously, these special use permit plans require a final stamp by a surveyor or an engineer, so that would be a condition of approval as I've written it in here. My understanding is we actually do have LLS stamped plans available to us tonight, so that can either be a condition included here as a formality or we can accept the plans this evening. The Conservation Commission did have a comment relative to the installation of the bridge. I'm not sure if that will be even relevant at this point based on the discussion about the gazebo, but you can view that comment here in the review as I provided it. Erosion control has been spoken to this evening, but you'll see there are several measures in place as part of the application and the construction process. They're itemized in the construction sequence that I believe do address erosion control during construction. Aside from that, I think the applicant has addressed all the concerns here and I do find the application complete at this point in time.
All right, let, let me just add that I was on, on the planning board when we adopted the changes that put the eighteen hundred square foot maximum on and I think the, because it doesn't say anything means that it's not allowed. I think we were, were thinking, okay, on these non-conforming lots that have a lot of wetlands, our job is to protect them as much as we, protect the wetlands as much as we can, but allow some development. And so we said, okay, eighteen hundred square foot structure is what we were talking about, period. So it's, it's clear in my mind, I guess.
And I have a question.
But I'm just one person.
I have a question.
Okay.
The DES approval. It, in fifteen through eighteen, it says discharge from de-watering areas should be in the sediment basins. Construction of equipment shall be inspected daily for leaking fuel. Permit is contracted, maintain appropriate oil, diesel spill kits, refueling of all equipment that's located outside of surface waters. Who ends up checking all that?
Well, some of this is the contractor responsibility, obviously, when it comes to, you know, having kits on site, that, that sort of thing. Certainly DES is the enforcement agency on this, but we have access to the permit and if we have staff on site, we can identify issues and report it back to DES, but ultimately DES is the one who enforces these specific provisions. With that said, they're not going to be on site every day, if at all, to inspect, so there is a certain burden, I think, as a town, that we should at least keep an eye out that these conditions are being met by the contractor and the applicant. Thank you.
Okay, let, let me just add that the Conservation Commission did review this and, and submitted their comments and.
When we do have concerns, one of the first checks in our process is to go to the Conservation Commission to address whether or not the DES permit requirements are being followed.
Anything?
Okay, yes.
And I, I think it's obvious, but just so that we can get it on the record, so the, the bridge and the gazebo are no longer part of this conversation.
Bridge, gazebo and walkway.
Bridge, gazebo and walkway are no longer part of the conversation. So just, and, and I, I think it was obvious, but, you know, for the sake of getting it on the record, that's, thank you.
And I'd like the applicant's, applicant and his applicant's agent to understand that it's not an arbitrary decision, but it's a general consensus of the board that eighteen hundred square feet is what the ordinance allows, no more, and that the gazebo, walkway and bridge pop that over the eighteen hundred square foot limit and consequently the only recourse, in my opinion, this board would have would be to send this case to the ZBA for a variance and then come back.
Okay, and the, this application is complete. Would somebody be willing to make?
Do we need to put something in there?
Well, we, we haven't, we haven't finished. We have to accept the application, go to the public.
I have a question, whether it's plea in that should there be in the review for approval something about removing the gazebo from the, the plans?
So I think we can address that during the public hearing and process after completeness, but yeah, I think that, that definitely should be discussed.
So move, Madam Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Okay, great. All right, if anyone's here that would like to make a comment on this application on lot thirty-three, why don't you come on up, give us your name, address and give us your thoughts.
I'm Gary Simons. I'm the abutter across Font Haven Drive. I own this lot. I own this lot beside it. My house sits on this lot. Got a couple of questions. In regards to the setback from the road, I've looked at a map for, since I bought the property back in the eighties and what I've seen is this dotted circle around which is a turnaround area for people who go down this road by mistake, cul-de-sac, call it what you will, but there is, it is a paved area at this point. So when I look at this, is this setback? Where, where does this measure from as far as the approved setbacks?
It, it, it is from the property line, not, not this. This, this line here is the actual pavement.
Okay, which one, this one right here?
This is the pavement.
Okay. So what's this back here? This is, this is?
Yeah, part of that fifty-foot right away.
Okay.
That makes up Font Haven Drive. Font Haven Drive goes to the wall.
So, so this represents a pavement?
This is the actual pavement.
Okay, good. So as I look at this and I know the land like the back of my hand, this is a stone wall here on this side of the stone wall. I know that the state or whoever has looked at that, but that's standing water year-round. It's a.
Water that deep.
So I just have to question, and I know how wet it gets, who, who came and looked at this property and said that this was not wet here?
Me.
You didn't?
Yes.
Okay, what time of year was it?
I was there a minimum of all of the times, I guess, in the beginning of the year.
Okay, 'cause, did you notice the standing water there? Like a lot of standing water?
Okay, why don't you direct your comments to us, Gary?
Oh, okay, I'm just asking him because he said he was there.
Yeah, okay, well, yes.
Okay. Anyways, I just have to question that. I wanted to see whether actually the setbacks were in, in relationship to what is there now and get that clarification as far as that. Where's the driveway? Is this the driveway here, that little brown line?
Yeah, and just to answer the question, he's, I want you to show him the driveway, please.
Yes, this brown line is the proposed driveway.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Okay. Anything else?
No, I just needed some questions and I was concerned again because I know that area and I know how wet it is, so.
Okay, thank you. Matt, I mean, it does bring up a, a good question. I mean, this is a lot on a, on an approved subdivision and where exactly, I mean, where is the property?
The setbacks should be measured from?
Right.
Yeah, it's a, it's an interesting question.
Do we, do we have the subdivision, Matt?
I don't have the subdivision with me this evening.
Is it a town road?
It's a private road.
It's a private road, I believe, yeah. I think it's, it's a, I think I, frankly, I think I should have done a detailed review of the subdivision with this in mind. I did not and that's a critical issue for the board. I would recommend continuing until we can remedy that issue, but I didn't review the subdivision in detail. I apologize for that, but.
I think as reference, we, we talk about the private roads. Usually the, the, the landowner generally in a case would bear ownership to the center of the road and as far as I see, the, the fact that, yeah, there's, there was water around the backside and the, the setback is only going to push him further back into the, the poorly drained area. I mean, in, in all fairness, the way it's drawn up makes quite practical sense and that's why I asked the question of a slab or, or a basement here. Let's be practical. If we want to talk about longevity down the road, we'd have to look out for the people who may end up living in this house and, and what the quality of life will be. So pushing it further back, that wouldn't be good. Keeping it where it is and having it raised out of the ground would be most beneficial. I think having to argue where, where, where the setback is from that property line is probably going to be within feet.
Okay, well.
Matt, could we make a condition that the lot is determined to be in the shape and the front line as shown?
I think that's a very risky condition.
Right.
It's my concern. If, if for some reason we determine that the lot line, I mean, again, I believe that the applicant does have a stamped plan by a licensed land surveyor.
Okay, because that, isn't that required with an application?
It is.
Well, where is it then? If, if we had that, that would answer the question.
Understood, understood. But what I was getting at is the fact that I, I, I don't think that it's a good idea to have a condition of basically verification of the property line and the setbacks. I don't know if we want to do that.
Mr. Plan?
Yeah, well, well, did, did another member of the public want to, want to speak on this issue? So you all set, sir? Okay, all right. Okay, can you answer, answer? Okay, can you get up, please?
I do have a stamped plan here by Brian Berlin who just happens to be here and perhaps he could offer some illumination on the property line question that's being discussed, if that's possible.
Can I ask next time you come up that you have a stamped plan for the next application?
I did, I did submit the stamped plan. I don't know why it didn't get to Matt.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I did submit.
It wasn't in my file.
I did do it.
I don't hear no.
And I did it in the next one too, so I don't know what happened.
Okay, well, can you, can you share that with us? Okay.
It just happened to happen to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just, I'll share.
Can you verify? No, you tell me, tell me what you see. You're better prepared than I am to read this.
Well, I see a licensed land surveyor, Brian Berlin stamped it and it shows the boundary line as shown on this plan.
It does. Okay, good.
Yeah.
Good, good, good.
Mr. Berlin, would you mind commenting on this? I'm sorry to do that to you, but.
No problem at all. Now I'm going to charge by the word instead of by the hour. I was the surveyor of record on that. My best recollection of that subdivision plan was the boundary line of frontage was a solid line and the temporary turnaround was a dashed line indicating an easement, not a property line.
Okay.
So that said, my opinion would be the front setback would be measured from the boundary line, not the easement line.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll pass this down.
Can I ask?
Okay, no other comments from members of the public and planning board?
Can I ask you a question?
Sure, sure.
And I, if it's in here, I apologize. Sewer and water connection, no issues?
There'd be a trench done for sewer water connections. I don't think there are any issues with that. They've referenced best management practice during that trenching. Town would be part of the process and I would.
I'm not, I'm actually not thinking about these folks, I'm thinking about us folks. I mean, sewer and water, condition of the water line, condition of sewer line, no issues?
You mean in the public right of way?
It's a private road, private.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not certain what the condition of the sewer itself in that area is. So I guess I, I can't speak to that with accuracy. I'm not sure how old the pipe is in that area.
Just trying to cross off things. On up.
So, so there is a sewer line and a water line going into that lot?
Yeah.
If that's what you're looking at.
Right, but the condition and age of the pipe or the size?
You know when it was in? You know when it was installed? When, when was it, when were these installed?
I installed them, I had them installed in eighty, eighty-eight.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And is it true gravity? Is it true gravity or is there a pump?
The, the main line goes down the road. When I had that road done, it was bank run and then asphalt. The gravity-fed sewer is in there. Dick Hammer, when he subdivided the lots back in sixty or seventy or whatever and he did it, he put the water lines in, sewer lines, there's a hub going off to six separate lots in there as, but this was obviously before the wetlands came about. So I, when I did the road, I wanted to make sure that that was taken care of.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did you have something else you wanted to, oh, okay. Any other issues?
I just, it says during the wet season. Do we have anything more specific than that? Not to be constructed during the wet season.
They don't provide any further definition beyond that, but part of the process would be for them to check with the town before they do any construction, so we would confirm whether or not they follow that condition. We, we don't structure it, you know, we don't say April and May are not permitted to do construction. We don't get to that level because I think it depends on the year and how wet it really is, but we would certainly do an inspection before that's done.
Hey, Matt, what is, everyone seems to agree that eight, we should, eighteen hundred square feet is what should be allowed. Matt, how do you think we should proceed? I mean, do this as a condition or, or how?
The, I, I believe that based on the fact that the planning board has a meeting next week, which would be an opportunity to review revised materials if the applicant is able to provide them, I would be more comfortable just continuing it one week to get a, a new narrative letter that doesn't include the gazebo, new plan that doesn't include the gazebo and new temporary impact figures, rather than making a condition of approval where we have to review all of that after the fact. Again, I think based on the potential delay of a week, I think that that makes some sense to continue.
I'm not sure I understand. Fine with me.
Either you could include a condition, if the board chooses to approve tonight, you could include a, a condition to basically remove any reference and plan of the gazebo from the materials, or you could simply continue it and have them prevent, provide revised plans and make a decision on the application next week, or presumably make a decision on the application next week on Tuesday.
I would, I would be in favor of just making it a condition now. I mean, I think to have them pay an engineer and to come back is, you know, a little arduous.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of with Vaughn. I mean, we're on the record that the gazebo, the bridge, the walkway, all that stuff's gone. We, we have a stamped plan, whether it showed up on time or not, not relevant. We're going to have to have another stamped plan that doesn't show the gazebo, the bridge and the, and the walkway, so not, no longer an issue. We've addressed the, the issue of the eighteen hundred square feet. I think the, the applicant has said we're, we're fine with that, we're fine with what the applicant said as well. And I, I would trust that we just leave it, you know, not willy-nilly, but we leave it to you as, as town planner. We, we give it as a condition of approval that, you know, for lack of a better thing, a clean set of documents shows up, you know, PDQ and next week you tell us whether you have them or not and then we go forward from there. But we don't continue it. We just give it as a condition of approval and you let us know whether we, whether we need to take any other action.
Are the rest of you okay with going with a condition, a conditional approval?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to have Matt make that condition of approval because I'm concerned that the devil is going to be in the details here.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
He's going to do the proposed conditions, so you want to, want to do that now?
Yeah, let me just write one quick note here.
Okay. Okay, well, just again for the, the record, I, I think the proposed placement of the house and the overall placement is the best that can be done for this non-conforming lot and does protect the wetlands and the buffer to the, as much as they can be protected with, with the construction of a home, so.
So I'll, I'll review these conditions. You'll see there's, I've made some changes based on the conversation. The conditions I'm recommending to the board for consideration. Condition one is a standard condition. The incorporation of the plan is amended to the date of the. The incorporation of the plan is amended to the date of this approval. I would note that the plan date will be a date subsequent, obviously, of this approval, because a revised plan will be needed, but that plan is a special use permit plan for Lot 23133, prepared by Peter Cooper Doc, Fernstone Associates, and obviously Brian Berlin's name is on that as well. Originally dated December 24th, 2017, revised to the appropriate date that the plan is prepared. All of the documentation submitted in the package is incorporated as part of this approval, unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner superseded. In the case of conflicting information between the documents, the most recent and this notice, the approval here, should generally be determining. Number three, the applicant shall comply with a pre-construction siltation and erosion control measures and construction sequence as shown in the plan, including but not limited to construction fencing, silt fencing, grass strips, biomatten, or grass perimeter, hay bales. I would remove condition number four, as that addressed specifically timing of the construction of the gazebo, so that condition comes out as number four. And in its place, I'll revise these numbers. Condition four, all conditions of NHDES Permit 2017-213 or O2O13 are hereby incorporated into this approval. Condition five, final large format copies to be provided, including a CWS stamp, certified wetland scientist stamp, an LLS or PE stamp, in this case it will be a licensed land surveyor stamp. That's condition five. Condition six, construction to occur during the dry time of the year. Condition seven, an inspection by the town should be required of siltation devices prior to construction. Condition seven, or rather, eight, the applicant shall be responsible for payment of all recording fees. Condition nine, final narrative letter to be stamped by a certified wetland scientist, so the letter that was provided actually having a stamp on that. Condition ten, these are four items that are standard within any special use permit approval. The applicant shall be required to monument the edges of the wetland in compliance with 175.9.1, the wetlands boundary monumentation, with those four items listed there that the applicant has a copy of. And then condition eleven, I would propose, all plans and materials to be revised to reflect removal of the walkway, gazebo, and bridge.
Okay, okay, thank you.
It's part of the final plan.
Okay, applicant, I assume you're okay, so I'm gonna close the public hearing. Okay, planning board members, any additional...
Matt, I would just recommend you, your last point, just put by a given date, whatever the date is, whatever the date, you know, a week from now, whatever, pick a date, put it on it, that way we know, we have a date certain as to when these things get done.
Okay, anything else, folks?
Do you want to have a limitation on the total square footage to 1745 or 1785?
Yeah.
Applied for total. Hold on for seventeen...
Cap it at 1785?
Yeah, I can add that to your last condition.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, that's a, that's a good idea.
So would that condition then read, all plans and materials to be revised to reflect removal of the walkway, gazebo, and bridge by, trying to choose a date here, fourteen days of this approval, and to reflect the total footprint impact of 1785 square feet? Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, that would be good.
Would we approve?
Okay. All right, anything else? Vaughn, are you all set? Okay, all right, so may be willing to make a motion to approve this application with the conditions just stated?
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay, this is Case 2018-01 for TaxMAP 231-33 on Font Haven Drive. All in favor of the motion with conditions, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, all right.
That's for you, Jim.
One down, and the next one.
Who made the motion on that? Sorry.
Excuse me?
Who made the motion on that? I'm sorry, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
And the...
Who seconded that motion? Apologies, we were revising the conditions over here. Mike?
Okay, the next application airs of Dorothy P. Whittier and William Ionasi. This again is a public hearing on Font Haven Drive, TaxMAP 231-32, Case 2018-02, special use permit.
Chair, before we get started, can we ask the applicant to provide us with a copy of the LLS signed plan? Because that was not in our package. These plans were sent to the office, but here's my initial...
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
They were sent to the office, and I don't think they...
Yeah, this one.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Unreached their final destination.
Sorry about that.
Is there anyone?
Yeah, Bill Ginn.
Yes, yep.
Russell. Thank you. This is thirty-three, Bill. We need thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yeah.
We have thirty-two.
Okay, Peter, are you all set here?
I'm a second time.
Okay, all right, sorry.
Peter, we have it. We're good, Peter. Peter, we're good.
They're good.
Don't worry.
Peter, grab the mic, please.
Don't worry. Don't worry.
This is the lot next to the, this, we just discussed this lot here. This is thirty-three. We're not discussing thirty-two on Font Haven Drive. Once again, it is sewered, sewer manhole, water, town water line. This lot has history. I first approached this lot in 2004 and got a wetland approval for this lot. At that time, I had originally, there is a, okay, just a layout of the lot. Once again, this is highlighted with the red being the upland areas, or buffer zone areas. There is a, the largest upland area is in the back. Do you want another one of those? I do have one of those. Okay, so on this property, there is a scattering of upland areas on the property. The largest upland area is at the total rear of the property, and a couple of spots along the road, and a few islands, as we call them, of upland scattered throughout the property. Back in 2004, I had originally applied for, this is a great story, you're gonna love this story.
Well, just keep going.
Yeah. The original application I had was to put a house back here and a wetland driveway to access it that was rejected by the Wetlands Bureau in 2004, and was told after much, many, seven different versions, came up with something very similar to what we're proposing tonight. At that time, there was a thirty-foot setback. Here in the yellow is the twenty and thirty foot that currently is the zoning requirement for this property. And this footprint was approved back in 2004. It never got to the planning board at that time. This resurfaced last year, had, went to the Wetlands Bureau again with the idea that since they approved this location once, they would approve it again. They rejected this, and they approved the location to the rear of the property, saying that that was ridiculous to possibly anybody would ever approve anything like this. And this was the minimum impact, even though it was much greater impact to access a driveway through there. Brought this to the technical review committee last spring, and, well, things didn't go well. They were much more interested in this, and through many months of discussion with the Wetlands Bureau, finally got approval for the house location here. This house location is entirely within poorly drained wetlands. It is 2,466 square feet of impact, including the seven-foot perimeter pad, which is proposed to surround this 28 by 36-foot house with a eight-foot by 20-foot deck or patio or whatever Bill is putting back there for this, with the steps on the front, however they're gonna be configured. But this area with a driveway coming in, 18-foot driveway accessing it. There is that, you know, as far as feasible location of, best location of this property, there is a location to the rear that would, you could put a building that would not impact wetlands. But the driveway, to put a reasonable driveway, is about 4,500 square feet of wetland impact, which, for the approval I got last year, I squeezed down to a ridiculous 10-foot wide driveway and 29.98 square feet, you know? But this is, in the big picture, much less impact than trying to build back here, just in direct terms and as well as indirect terms. Because a part of this, and as we discussed with the other lot, this has also a deed restriction on no further impact to the property except for damaged diseased trees and stuff, so this will remain the wooded lot it is now, except for this one building envelope that is gonna be proposed. No gazebo, no hidden features here on this. So there is a, the house itself is, with overhang, is 1,140 square feet with a deck, stairs, and driveway, even including the driveway, that's 1,756 square feet. Without the driveway, it's 1,323 square feet, and based on what Bill said before, apparently it's gonna be even less, because it's gonna be a pervious patio as opposed to what I was envisioning a deck when I designed this. There is a certain amount of impact to the buffer zone with the driveway. There's 100 square foot of impact to a buffer zone, and then there's incidental temporary impact to install the perimeter stone wall. It's gonna be a pad that's gonna be built, kind of like a three-fairway. The initial pad, house pad, will be constructed first before the, with a retaining wall around it, and that be stabilized or covered with matting to prevent any kind of erosion from happening outside the building area. Now, this has a similar wetland as the abutting lot, poorly drained wetland. There is, you know, seasonal puddles that show up, especially outside of the growing season, but this is not very poorly drained. There is not a potted area, there is no channeled flow through here. There is a generalized flow to the northwestly direction toward Clark Road, where this whole area drains, but there is no surface flow patterns in this wetland. It's forested, has no fish within it, and this, all this construction area is gonna be done behind erosion control devices with the orange construction fencing to make sure that any impact will be limited to it. Any excavation that happens, everything gets taken off-site. There is no room for stockpiling anything on this. The, there is, it is sewered. There's not gonna be any septic system placed on this lot. The biggest concern that would happen is sedimentation if the erosion control wasn't maintained properly. I'm sure it will be. The quality of the builder we have and the inspection process of the town will ensure that it'll be maintained here. The wetland vegetation in the property is gonna be protected by the deed, and there is nothing overly unique about this vegetation. It's a great little wetland area, you know, common forested wetland, no unique endangered species found here. There is just, as far as the big picture, building this in the front of the lot is the least impacting alternative for this property because of the direct and, more importantly, the indirect impacts that would be associated with having a long driveway to access the back area. It has a wetland approval process, and if I've missed anything on the list, please let me know.
Questions?
Back to the stone wall and the elevations. How tall is the stone wall of that outside rim, again?
It's, I believe it's a couple of feet. It's, it's a...
I can see the elevation on this map.
Five sixty-two is the elevation of the wall. It's gonna be between two and three, well, probably two and a half to three feet high. Five fifty-seven.
Five fifty-seven at the bottom. You says it's...
Right.
Five sixty-three?
Five sixty-two. So it could be five feet high, yeah. It's gonna be a substantial wall.
Is that, again, gonna be a basement or a slab or, no basement, no pump line?
Doctor, could you, what is it, this person, two, three, four, eight, for within the house, would you, would there be a trench, need to drainage, trench drainage?
That was my question. So the trench drain goes around the house, but the water that you catch off the drip edge goes down, and then the pump pumps it back outside.
Can you please, sorry, but, thank you.
When you install, whether it be a basement foundation or a crawl space or a slab, we have perimeter drainage around the bottom of the foundation, and we have the drip around the house. And everything that goes down that way, then gravity drains back to the wetland. We also put an interior drain inside the foundation in case anything seeps through. And we do put a pump on the inside as a precaution. So this is very similar to what we did at Three-Fairway, and we've had no issues, no water.
The only reason that I'm asking this question is because on the legend, it showed a pump figure as a legend, and that's why I asked the question, is there gonna be a pump? Because I didn't see it marked on the map. It has a legend of where a pump symbol would be, but I don't see it on the map.
There'll be no exterior pump.
That's just a standard legend.
I understand, but I was asking the question if there was gonna be a pump. He said there might be.
No, we always put a sump pump, whether it be a basement or a crawl space, inside the house, but there will be no ex...
And that sump pump is the line that goes out. Where do we see that on the property? When somebody shows up, they say, oh, here's a sump pump line squirting water out into this area over here. Do you see what I'm saying? I'm trying to digest that a little bit.
The pump line would go into the exterior trench and perimeter drain.
Okay.
It's not shown.
I guess it wouldn't make much sense if you were just turning the water back around, because that's basically what you just told me.
No.
I mean, I don't have a problem with you telling me it's gonna go over here. I don't. It just, it doesn't make any sense for you to say it's going down the crushed zone on the perimeter drain, going back into the house, and then we're gonna pump it back out into the crushed zone drain, and it's gonna filter into the ground. Just tell me where it's gonna go on the map over here, and I'd be happy.
Peter didn't show it, so if we...
Are you going to show it?
Sure.
Okay, that's all I'm saying, I'm just...
Okay. We'll add it to the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions here? Matt?
We've quite comprehensively covered this. Obviously, I was involved with the TRC process six months or so ago, seven months or so ago, and... ago, and what's unique about this is that day four, I each actually wrote letters to DES supporting moving the primary dwelling unit up towards the road in order to be compliant, not only with the zoning, but to minimize the environmental impact. So I wanna make it clear that although we supported moving the structure, this proposal is independent of that. We were just really supporting the fact that we should minimize impact. Aside from that, I think Peter's covered the total impact figures extensively. Conservation Commission, their comment was sort of interesting, I think, noting the applicant did as well as they could be done considering the limitations of the parcel, but they didn't have any further comment beyond that. And with that said, I think they've covered erosion control and really it comes down to these criteria, again, of minimizing detrimental impact and whether or not there's a proposed viable alternative location or a viable alternative location at all on the parcel as it exists now. And this one is clearly below the eighteen-hundred-square-foot threshold that we talked about as part of the last application, qualifies for this type of application.
Okay.
It is complete.
Thank you. Okay, with some, thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. Okay, I'll open the public hearing now if any member of the public wants to comment on this application.
Hi, Gary Simons again. Just a couple of clarifications here, because I remember very clearly, and I guess it was Peter, we've changed a little bit in thirteen years, but I can remember a surveyor coming out and surveying this property when it went up for sale or was gonna be up for sale. And I remember asking, I said, so, is this a buildable lot? Quote-unquote. There's a postage stamp at the back end of the lot that's buildable, but other than that, it's not buildable. And that was what was said. I find it interesting now that all of a sudden it's, there's a buildable lot in the front of the lot that I guess wasn't there before, but who knows? How, how much fill do you have to put in to make this elevation where you're at? Peter, do you know?
Okay, can you, he has the microphone.
So I guess my question is this. As conservation and watershed and so forth, there's an interest. When something is unbuildable and then it becomes buildable because of other things, does that, does that meet your requirements? Because you're filling in wetlands to do this. And yes, it's minimum impact versus building here, but you're still filling in wetlands. That's my only question.
And the answer is that the ordinance certainly provides for development when dredge and fill is necessary. The board's role is really to analyze whether or not impact is being minimized in a way that makes the development appropriate in the wetlands. So I'm not sure if that answers your question. The board's role is really to determine whether or not everything is being done to limit not only impact, but also site the development in a way that's appropriate on a lot. We don't really determine whether a lot is or is not buildable. It's clear that DES is actually permitting dredge and fill developments like this one. So the board then plays a regulatory and almost a design role in some ways when reviewing these sorts of applications.
In the, in the construction sequence, it does say backfill with permeable material. So basically what's happening here is they're building a raised loaf, they have a stone girder around it, they have filter fabric on the inside, they put their permeable material in there, they set their footings and they build their house. I mean, we have to allow people to find a technique and a modern way to build a house. I think they've done a pretty good job here under the circumstances.
Okay.
I'd also say that building in the back of the lot would cause not just the building issues, but it would affect the snow plowing in the wintertime and lots of stuff would be moved into that wetland over a period of time. And so therefore, the back of that lot is not a great place to build. And I think that if you look at the slope there, given that there's supposed to be no other cutting outside of the construction area, there will be a lot of, the water will just seep in, nutrients will seep into the, into the waterland and it's not gonna cause real issues for the watershed.
Right, and we did, I mean, I was at the TRC, I guess you were there too, I think, Paul, and it seemed to have been the consensus that there would be much more impact, negative impact on the wetlands if we were to go ahead with the state-approved location at the rear of the lot. So, I mean, this lot is part of, was part of an approved subdivision and the town, I think, did what they felt was right by adopting these regulations to, with certain conditions to allow smaller dwellings to be placed on the lot. So that's why we're where we are.
And has the town ever determined that this lot was unbuildable?
No, the town would never render a determination of that sort.
Does the tax record indicate that it's a buildable lot?
The tax records don't really indicate either way. The measure is typically the assessed value of a parcel and whether or not that reflects a buildability. And I think in this case, I can't speak to the assessed value, but the town wouldn't have not, would not have rendered such an opinion on a lot. A surveyor may have spoken to the fact that due to the wetlands issues, there'd be permitting and other relief needed, but that may be why a surveyor said that it was unbuildable, but with relief in certain places, any lot can really be built upon.
Wouldn't some of the unbuildability of a lot be associated with a septic system? In other words, this lot, I don't think you could possibly put a septic system on, but this has a sewer, so that's not an issue in this case.
Sure, that's a fair point, absolutely.
Matt, there was a discussion about the amount of fill. Do we need to determine how much fill is gonna be brought in?
It's not part of the board's review typically.
Okay.
It may be something the board may wish to consider in the future, but volume of fill is not something that the board typically considers. It really considers sort of the spatial square footage impact.
Okay.
Not the volume fill.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, folks? Any other comments, applicants? You're all set. Okay, Matt, did you, you have some conditions that...
Do, and I...
...I want us to consider? Well, he reads the conditions, then we give the applicant an opportunity to speak and then I'll close it. Thank you.
I apologize for bringing through, everyone through these again, but the first condition is the plan as amended to the date of the approval is hereby incorporated. This is a special use permit plan for lot, XMAP in Lot 231-032, paired by Peter Cooperdock and dated December fourth, 2017. And obviously, any subsequent LLS stamping, if there are modifications, that plan would be the newest version. All of the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and any requirements proposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation this knows herein shall generally be determined. Condition three, the applicant shall comply with the pre-construction, siltation, erosion control measures and construction sequence as shown on the plan, including but not limited to construction fencing, silt fencing, biomattening or grass perimeter and hay bales. Condition four, all conditions of NHDS permit number 2017-03083 are hereby incorporated into this approval. Final large format copies to provide, including a CWS stamp and a LLS or PE stamp, which I think we have that this evening. Condition six, construction is to occur during the dry time of the year. Condition seven, inspection by the town shall be required of siltation devices prior to construction. Condition eight, the applicant shall be responsible for all recording fees. Condition nine, the final narrative letter to be stamped by the certified wetland scientist again. Condition ten, the applicant shall be required to monument the edge of the wetlands in compliance with 175-9.1. That's the wetlands boundary monumentation with those four items below as listed there. Then condition eleven, I did add a condition for the pump line to be shown on the plan as discussed during the hearing as part of any revised plans that are submitted. So that's conditions one through eleven.
Thank you. Applicant, you're all set? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. Planning board members, comments? What are your thoughts? Ready to act on this?
I'm going to go first.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve this, this lot on Font Haven Drive with the conditions that were just indicated. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, all right, thank you very much, folks. Thanks for your patience. Okay, next item. Sixteen North Main Street LLC. This is four sixteen North Main Street, otherwise known as the Yum-Yum Shop. Tax map 217-101, case 2018-03. This is a site plan review for an addition to an existing building for patios and plantings. And the applicant, come on up and...
I'd just like to note some additional pieces of information that I've received. I've received four waiver request forms from the applicant, the justification letter, in addition to some architectural renderings, and I'll pass those along to the board members.
Okay.
I just received those this evening, so they're for consideration during this evening's deliberations.
All right, great.
We're supposed to read all of those letters before we have a conversation here?
It's a relatively simple package, but that's up to the board, what you'd like to do.
The waivers, well, the applicant is supposed to, you're gonna need to go through the waivers and, and give us a justification for granting.
Yes, and obviously the letters are here and the architectural plans.
Okay.
And Matt has a copy too.
Okay, all right. Did you folks get this packet that he just gave me? Why don't we just pass it down and... He's gonna go, go through all the information.
Okay, once again, my name is Brian Berlin. I'm a licensed land surveyor and the president of a company called Land Tech. With me tonight is the three Peters. We have Peter Cooperdock, who has played a role in this planning move, Peter Riso, who is the builder doing renovations on the building now, and Peter Kelly, who is the, I believe, a former owner and operator of the business. The property is known as Tax Map 217-101 and also known as Sixteen North Main Street. It's more fondly known as the Yum-Yum Shop. Many of you have probably been there. Current uses are a bakery, a restaurant, and ice cream stand. The business very much caters to pedestrian clientele frequenting the Main Street area. It's about a quarter acre in size with eighty-two feet of road frontage and twenty-four feet of Lake Winnipesaukee frontage to the rear. It's zone central business district. The property shares a reciprocal travel easement through the lot, sharing it with the lot behind them known as Lot or Map 217-10, owned by Twenty-two-24 North Main Street Trust. Typical traffic is to both properties as they enter through the Yum-Yum Shop, circle around on the rear property, and exit through the rear property. This proposal is basically five things in simplest form. Thing one is to add a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-square-foot addition on the west side of the prop, of the building. And that would be right here, being an eight-and-a-half-by-twenty-eight-foot addition. Thing two is to replace an existing impermeable front patio with a new permeable patio and associated landscaping. So currently, there's a patio in the front with some landscaping to be replaced with this new patio and landscape planting area here. This patio is to be a pervious infiltration-type patio. Thing three is to replace this rear patio with a new pervious patio. Thing four is to place a, install a new lower patio near the waterfront with steps leading down to it and then steps leading down to the ground. And lastly, thing five is to be open year-round. Please be advised that the landscaping plan was designed by Blue Ridge Landscaping. Since we made application, things have evolved, both from the planner review and input from the owners. So I guess I'm gonna say that this is not gonna be the final plan. Expected revisions would be a solid waste enclosure. That would be about a four-by-six enclosed area just behind the new addition where the trash receptacles would be placed. Exterior lighting is currently being designed by others, but we do want to propose exterior lighting not shown on this plan. The planner review discussed some concern with the aisle behind the parking. It does meet the very minimum standard of fourteen feet, thanks to forty-five-degree parking, but the owners and applicants are willing to discuss other parking scenarios where the aisle can be made wider. There will likely be a gate placed right here to prevent traffic or pedestrian traffic from going from the parking area to the rear patio, so the control of access to the rear patio is through the building. And vegetation to be planted at the water's edge would also be added to the plan.
Where is that, the waste, the solid waste enclosure gonna go again?
Right behind here by the telephone pole.
Oh, it's behind there, okay.
There's currently, well, there was a shed there, but that has been removed.
Is that what is referred to on the plan as slab?
Yeah, okay.
The shed was on the slab, yes, sir.
And, and so I'm a little confused, if I could, you're saying that the access to that rear patio is going to be, how?
Through the building.
Oh, I thought, I thought I saw your finger go up from the slab behind the building and then to the patio.
The comment was to put a gate here to prevent pedestrian access to the patio.
Yeah, I had been concerned when I was looking at this that people may wanna go out to the patio area around the back, and that's technically a seating and serving area, so I just didn't wanna encourage that.
I'm sure they're gonna want to for Fourth of July.
I don't wanna hop the fence.
Planner Sullivan also suggested a discussion regarding a portion of the new patio being partially in the floodplain. Being Lake Winnipesaukee, it does have a flood fringe around it and a portion of the lower patio is, would be in it, but it would be above it, so it'd only just displace some area. It's legal to do so within a floodplain, not within a floodway. He also requests a description of deliveries, loading, and unloading, which Peter Kelly will speak to. And lastly, we are gonna request three waivers and what I'm gonna call a judgment by this The first waiver is to Site Plan Regulation 173-21 as it applies to all the details of stormwater drainage. This plan proposes a decrease in impermeable surfaces of eleven-hundred square feet, and because of permeating infiltrating patios, it will increase the infiltration of the lot. We also have a letter by Jeff Lewis, who is a professional engineer who's reviewed the plan and concurs that because of those two factors just noted, runoff should be decreased and the flows would be pretty much unchanged. And runoff leaving the site would be decreased, so that's waiver one. Waiver two is, I'm gonna request a waiver from Construction Guarantee Security. This is only a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-square-foot addition. These patios are not high-tech. It's mostly manual labor, it's, they're very routinely placed, and I believe that demanding construction security in this case might be a little bit of overkill. construction security in this case might be a little bit of overkill. The third waiver is a zoning requirement, but you are allowed to waive it, and that is streetscape. And I'm supposed to have it attached here. It's zoning one seventy-five dash one fifty-four, and in one seventy-five dash one fifty-five, it does say the streetscape and buffer provisions of this article may be waived by the planning board if the following criteria determine by the planning board to comply with the purpose and intent of this article. A is proposed project is located in the C two GDA, C two WF, or C one CS zones, and proposal is the adaptive reuse of existing buildings. B is new development is in compliance with the voluntary design review guidelines, including but not limited to architectural style of buildings and structures, landscaping lot layout and design, and building scale and massing. We submit to you that A, we're in a commercial zone, and B, we're reusing an existing building, and C, the proposal complies with your voluntary design review guidelines. And the last one, I can't say is a waiver because it's an ordinance, but I do think it's inapplicable here, and I would like the planning board to make that judgment. And that regards the landscaping of trees around a parking area. It's zoning one seventy-five dash one thirty-seven, which states, "On at least three sides of the perimeter of an outdoor parking lot, there shall be planted at least one tree for every eight parking spaces abutting the perimeter. Such trees shall be spaced so that some part of the parking space is not more than thirty feet from a tree." We believe this is not applicable in this case because this existing parking system is an existing system and is grandfathered. It is legally non-conforming and it has no trees now. In fact, there isn't a tree on that whole lot. The existing parking abuts the westerly boundary line. There's no increase proposed in this existing parking system. There are no improvements to the existing parking system with the exception of lining the spaces. The parking system is completely paved, there is no green space at all, and the pavement goes beyond the property line onto the abutting land. There's no room for trees because of the current layout. And I believe that plant, planting of trees there would probably disrupt the visual acuity of drivers, given what a high pedestrian area this is.
You're gonna speak to this because we can't waive an ordinance.
You can't waive an ordinance, but you certainly can find that this does not apply. I mean, that's, that's within reason, but yes, you can't, you cannot waive a section of zoning ordinance, correct?
Therefore, I'm not asking you to waive it.
Okay.
Lastly, we hope you find this application complete and evolved enough where a conditional approval can be granted this evening based on some discussions about the parking layout and things like that. Thank you.
And Mr. Kelly, you're gonna speak to the delivery issue?
Yep, I'm Peter Kelly. I was told that you may want me to speak regarding the delivery and how it works down there. The parking lot, as we know, it's a tight area. The eighteen-wheelers that deliver to the bakery typically deliver two times a week, and they're typically weekdays, not weekends. They back directly into the parking lot, typically in the easement area. They unload, usually takes about a half an hour. They try to come in between seven AM and ten AM because they don't wanna be down there when it's any busier either. So that's, that's typically how the deliveries work down there. It's, it's unloaded where the proposed addition is, into that what is now a large gray door on the side of the building, on the west side. It would still come in there, however, that proposed addition would have a freezer, so it'd go directly into that addition and write in.
Okay. Any questions about the deliveries?
That is typically the way it's delivered, or it was delivered in the past.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, did you have anything else, Brian, that you...
I didn't know when or if there would be a discussion as to widening that aisle by revising the parking or removing some onsite spaces.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we are gonna deal with that issue. Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I'm, I feel very uncomfortable with this application at this point. We have four waivers that we haven't seen before. We actually haven't seen them except for maybe a really quick minute or two looksee, one set of copies given to the entire board. I haven't had a chance to really review the impact of these waivers, granting them or not granting them. I haven't got plans that, the plans we have for our packets tonight do not incorporate the changes that the applicant has described making on these plans. I have no paper other than the set of plans that was circulated here that was very quick. I haven't had a chance to look at them either. I don't feel really comfortable or competent making a decision based upon what's been presented to me tonight. I would really be much happier if this application were continued, we had a proper set of documents in our packets to look over, consider. I would then feel more comfortable being, being able to come back with all the facts and the best of my ability to understand them and interpret the ordinances and make a decision at that point.
Okay, but can we continue, why don't we continue on...
Your pleasure, Madam Chairman.
On this focus, is that okay with everybody? So, Matt, why don't you just...
I'd love to jump in. So, I'm going to, in this case, because there are a lot of things in my review that I don't think we've discussed yet, I'm actually gonna read through the review, and I think if we have questions or anything of that nature, we can just sort of cover them as I go. Is that good for everybody?
I just, I just had one question. When, when you started your presentation, you said, "This won't be the final plan."
Yeah.
That's where I get concerned because we're discussing stuff here, and if this isn't gonna be the final plan, why are we discussing it? What you said.
Almost never when you submit a plan is it the final plan. Mr. Cooperdok is a perfect example of that because the last two hearings, he has come up with a new plan. Again, the planner's review had some comments that were worthy of adding to the plan. It's, well, all the things that I had mentioned, so we would like to work with you and make the plan better. I have no objection to a continuance. I would like to have a positive step forward with planning this plan, so the next one will be more final, but I can almost promise you it won't be the final. There's always a change at every hearing, it seems, so...
Yeah, and folks are here.
Just wanted to understand what he was talking about.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, Paul.
I, I kind of agree with the notion that, with my colleagues here, that, you know, there's a lot of moving parts on, on your side, our side, in terms of us coming up to speed with all the hard work you've done. And, and so, I'm gonna characterize at least my conversation going forward at this, for this thing, is a non-binding, almost a technical review type discussion. Whatever we, you know, whatever we, you know, offer in terms, at least whatever I offer in terms of a thought, it's not binding on behalf of the planning board. It's kind of a, our, my sense of things that I might push back on you guys on when you come forward. So, you know, I, I think we're out of the, you know, the, at least I am. I'm out of the formal conversation here. I'm into almost a T R C ki, type of a conversation with you folks. You know, I react to some of the things you want in terms of waivers, I'd push back on those. I react to some of the things you wanna do for, you know, for a streetscape. You know, I'm, I'd wanna know more, but you know, that doesn't, that doesn't sound crazy. I'd react, you know, that your idea about the trees. I, I think my sense would be that might make a lot of sense. We can't waive an ordinance, but to say it doesn't, at least I would make a sense that it may not apply. But I, I agree with my, with my colleagues here. We're, we're a nowhere shape or form, at least I'm not, in, in having an ability to say, "Go ye forth with your, with your idea here." We should probably stake out some things we wanna talk about, get 'em in front of you characters, and let you, let you come back to us with some hard facts.
I have, I have no problem with that.
Okay, but I wanna...
It's my job to ask.
I think it's important to continue so that we can get all the issues, and I...
I agree.
You know, Mr. Hughes is here, and I don't know what his comments might be, so...
I agree.
I wanna get everything out...
I agree.
So that we can deal with it, okay?
Is everyone comfortable with sort of doing that by going through this review and adding any comments in that there might be?
Yeah, and then, then I, well, yeah, yeah, okay, go ahead.
I'm, I'm not sure that exercises anything other than one in futility, because we're gonna be doing it all over again when we hear this application with a proper set of plans, having had a chance to, to consider the waivers and the plan in the entire application. At that point, I think we need to discuss the bits and pieces, including the planner review. We're only gonna do it again, aren't we? If we do it tonight, we're gonna do it again next time.
Well, he may have some issues that, that the abutters may have, wanna comment on.
We'd be doing it here from them.
Right.
And if, if you have anything to add that is not currently in your planner review that is generated by the new information tonight, that would be good to hear too.
I think you, I think you and Kathy are making two different points. I think Kathy is saying that you'd like me to do the review this evening so they hear my concerns in the review. Is that correct, Kathy?
Yeah, so that then we can deal with them the next time if they choose.
Well, I defer to Kathy, she's the boss.
I can simply go through it quickly, and then we can sort of have those concerns available to the public.
Don't do the perfunctory.
I will say...
Do the real, do, do the hard ones.
Well, and I will say that all of these concerns have been passed along to the applicant. As late as today, we were having discussions even about potential issues that might come up this evening, so I, I think it's good to review them for the public, but we certainly have been in discussion. And with that, I, I guess I'll get into...
I mean, the public needs to know that the lighting plan is gonna come back here, and they're gonna get a chance to see it.
Absolutely, with no question, yes. With no question, yes. So I'll, I'll sort of start by summarizing what I view the project as. I think Mr. Berlin did break it down into some bite-sized pieces, but I have a few more items of description here. Obviously, the two hundred and thirty-eight square foot addition for food storage is the primary modification being made from a structural perspective here. There's also renovation going on, though not necessarily applicable to the site plan review part of things. It does impact the parking requirements, so I think it's within this board's purview to consider.
Not sure I follow what you just said.
So the renovation going on in the inside could potentially have an impact on the square footage requirements for the parking, because parking is based on square footage on the inside of the building. So there is renovation going on, so if you see work going on, on the site, it's likely interior, it's interior work.
So is that inside the parking area?
No, that is inside the building, but the square footage inside the building actually impacts what parking is needed onsite. So if there are, if the seating area is changing in a way that changes the parking requirements, or the kitchen space is changing in a way that changes the parking requirements, all of that would have an impact on the number of spaces being required as part of this application.
I just, maybe I don't understand the ordinance, but when you're in the downtown zone...
Right. You still have a parking requirement. The way you satisfy that parking requirement is loosened because you can use an off-site parking require, off-site parking...
So when you're in the downtown zone, even, so just help me, okay? Help me so I can understand this and, and the public as well. So let's assume, just for giggles, that there is, because of the way the, the interior of the building gets configured, it has an implication on the amount of parking spaces. The developer cannot add more parking spaces because of the, the way in which this...
Constraints of the site.
The constraints of the site. Therefore, because they're in the downtown area, they could measure the footsteps that could take them to a municipal parking lot, and they would satisfy the concern. If all of that is true, then what is your concern?
I'm simply noting the fact that there's interior renovation going on. That's all I'm noting here.
But his parking impact is known as existent because they can claim...
It's moot.
Okay, that's fair, that's fine. Can we move on past that?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we're not, we're not dealing with...
Simply knowing the fact that there's interior renovation going on, and I, I agree that there isn't...
And there is a critical issue because the applicant has indicated they'd like to reduce one parking space. I wanna hear from the abutters, how they feel about that.
Okay. Additionally, there's removal of a small existing landscaped area that is proposed, but negligible in size. Insulation of pervious patios, obviously to the rear and adjacent to the lake. Insulation of pervious patio on the front area of the lot and some associated retaining walls that go along with that. And insulation of a two-foot retaining wall and planting area on the front of the site. There's revegetation of an existing landscaped area in the front, that's to the left side as you look at the front of the property, there'd be a revegetation plan going on there. Removal of the concrete slab to the rear of the building. Removal of the existing sign and placement of an existing sign. I just wanna point out that obviously the sign is handled through the sign permitting process, but it's shown, the location is shown on the plan here, so that is for the board to consider. Moving into the review, and I did wanna note too that obviously the hours of operation are changing and that this is going to be a year-round business now, and there's an impact to snow storage and other issues as well, with this being a year-round operation. Under the access section, there are no modifications being proposed to the existing access, really the curb cut onto the property from what's being proposed here from North Main Street. Pedestrian access is clearly over the patio area in front of the building. I had expressed some concerns to the applicant about pedestrians trying to access the rear patio and potentially any kind of dock installation that exists back there, and I had recommended that there may be a need to install a gate in that area accordingly, and I think the applicant is considering that suggested modification. I was curious if the applicant would address how the doors to the addition would be used, but I think that's been addressed tonight. That's going to be a food storage area, likely used by delivery and staff individuals as well. But I am still interested in how frequently that will be used, whether there'll be a lot of pedestrian traffic there, and that's based on the very narrow aisle width that exists. And if we have folks going in and out, whether they be staff, on a consistent basis, I do think it presents a potential access issue based on the expansion into that right-of-way area that's being proposed by the application. Circulation and parking, the application as it exists today proposes five dimensionally conforming parking spaces that are proposed to be lined, with one of those being an ADA compliant van-accessible parking space. These spaces are conforming in the context of the ordinance, based on a forty-five-degree parking layout, they're nine by nineteen, with the van space being sixteen by nineteen. The required maneuvering aisle for a forty-five-degree parking space is fourteen feet, and as Mr. Berlin was saying, the aisle is very narrow in some locations. The narrowest being sort of to the edge of the striped, the lined area adjacent to the van parking space, it is very narrow in that area. But the narrowest measurement to the actual edge of a parking space itself, as Mr. Berlin stated, is fourteen point one feet, I believe. So that is a very narrow passage in the context of the ordinance.
Does it make sense to, for the applicant to remove parking area number one, the aisle?
That is a question I'd like the board to consider, whether or not balancing the, the parking requirement with the safety of the aisle, whether or not moving the parking is something the board would be supportive of based on the, some one hundred and twenty-four parking spaces that are provided within five hundred feet of the site.
Yep.
I think it would make a substantial improvement to the safety of the site.
I think so, too.
And I would recommend potentially removing one.
So, the, the lot right now is not a conforming lot.
In...
It's a little tight going around the corner. What you're saying is we should remove parking to make it less non-conforming?
So what I'm saying is that the proposal is conforming, fully conforming.
Yep.
And I believe the existing plan on record, just as referenced, has some nine spaces, eight spaces, which are clearly non-conforming under the ordinance. So to get the conforming spaces on there, the maximum we can achieve is five. What I'm saying is, based on the availability of off-site parking, if an adjustment could be made at the expense of losing one onsite parking space, you may be able to really improve the safety of that corridor there, but you would lose a parking space. So it's, it's a balancing act that sort of the board can make a decision on, but...
Or make, do we make a decision on that because it's a, it's a grandfathered-in situation? Or do we give a...
You would be making a decision on that because...
Do we give a recommendation?
You would make a decision.
You would, okay.
You, you have the ability to make a decision. Because there's that availability of parking off-site, you can decide to only approve three spaces onsite. Four spaces onsite.
Okay, keep, keep going.
So I've sort of covered my, my next item, but per the parking calculations on sheet two of three, the proposed use requires twenty-seven point zero six parking spaces. Obviously, it's an onsite, an additional twenty-two spaces would be required, technically actually would be really twenty-eight spaces. They aren't able to provide that, obviously, so they've conducted a parking analysis based on the zoning ordinance and parking spaces within five hundred walking feet, and they've identified some one hundred and twenty-four parking spaces that are available off-site. So I think that they're using the ordinance as it's supposed to be used in the downtown area. It doesn't appear that the loading space has been delineated, but I think the applicant has addressed that issue tonight. Obviously, the idea of backing an eighteen-wheeler into that space is, it sounds pretty challenging. Obviously, the idea of backing an 18-wheeler into that space is, it sounds pretty challenging. I'm not sure if that space issue would be made worse by the installation of this addition, but it certainly would tighten up the site. But it sounds like based on the timing of the deliveries and the frequency, there may not be as significant as an issue as I thought when I was preparing my review. The lot is subject to an easement in favor of Lot 2017-102. The easement has been provided in your packets, I believe, for your review. There are no specific dimensions provided as part of that, that easement, so it is a somewhat nebulous form. With that said, I don't think the easement language is very, really concerning in the context of what's being proposed. I don't think there's further encroachment into safe passage. However, I would recommend that if the board does adjust the parking spaces, by reducing the number and adjusting those spaces, you would increase the aisle width for that right-to-cross, which I think is a positive change.
Is that easement being exercised now?
Yes.
Has it been exercised for an awfully long time?
I believe so.
Okay, thank you.
The condo association to the rear of this lot, it's their primary access to the property from an in-direction. The applicant has requested, this is moving to landscaping, there's an existing non-conformity in the context of landscaping, specifically relating to the parking lot, as you said. There are no trees adjacent to the parking lot. We have a standard that trees be provided on three sides, with the, with one for each eight spaces. They've obviously requested some sort of waiver from that, and I think that's for the board's consideration at the next meeting. Additionally, they have requested that the Section 175-153, the streetscape, may not apply to this application as proposed as well, and that waiver request has been included for the board's review. I will note that additional landscaping is being added in the area adjacent to the sidewalk, where the current patio butts the sidewalk, so there is some landscaping being done in that area. Drainage, another waiver being requested. Through the installation of pervious patios, as shown on sheet three, the reduction in pervious site coverage here goes from 76.3% to 65.8%. That's a reduction of about 1,200 square feet or 1,100 square feet in total. The existing onsite drainage patterns are basically a sheet flow pattern. So on the northern side, it sheet flows towards Main Street into a closed drainage system, as the applicant included in their materials. And there is sheet flow on the southern side, which essentially ends up in the lake as sheet flow across the existing impervious, impervious surfaces there. Per the applicant's letter, the decrease in pervious coverage is stated to result in a decrease in both the peak rate and volume of stormwater runoff from the site to both Main Street and the lake. In addition, the drainage patterns of the site will remain unchanged, with the sheet runoff, runoff conditions being maintained in both directions. So that's what the letter from Jeff Lewis, stamped by P.E., states at this time. Additionally, the applicant has requested that based on that decrease in pervious coverage, that a third-party review of drainage and stormwater management not be requested, and I, I concur with that recommendation. Typically, when there's a reduction in pervious recommendation, I have the latitude to request a third-party engineer of a drainage analysis. Because they haven't provided a drainage analysis and they've provided a letter in its place, I didn't feel a third-party review of the letter with a very clear conclusion was necessary to part of this application. No such review was done. Jeff Lewis does conclude in his letter that it's reasonable to conclude that there will be no adverse, there will not be any adverse impacts to downstream properties or to any drainage infrastructure or to the lake. That was his conclusion in his letter. Snow storage was noted during the TRC process by Adam Tasker of the Public Works Department, especially with this turning into, again, a year-round business, that's a, a change in the operation of the site. And it's been noted that snow will be removed from the site during year-round operations, so I believe that's, I believe Mr. O'Brien has a question.
A question about that? Is it relevant that this becomes a year-round site, given that there's an easement already in place for the condominiums, which are occupied down near the water? Isn't snow being removed now?
The primary concern, I think, would be in the patio areas, actually. So if the patio areas are being cleared for access.
That 238 square feet?
No, actually, the patio area between the front wall of the building and the sidewalk. If that area is being cleared, if snow is being cleared there, I'm not, I don't think it's a significant snow storage issue, but.
I just wanted to make sure I know what snow storage we're talking about.
Yeah, my understanding is that obviously the existing traveled, the right-of-way is cleared, so I don't think there's an impact there. Erosion control, silt fence is shown for construction of the patio area adjacent to lake, to the lake. Obviously, that's the most sensitive area, I think, as part of this construction, and erosion control is necessary there. And that appears to be the only erosion control proposed as part of this project, and I, I believe that's appropriate. Utilities, obviously utilities are existing, and I don't believe there are any proposed modifications. However, I'll get to lighting right now. No lighting improvements are shown on the plan. I believe that the applicant should address any lighting that's necessary for the proposed rear patio area, the front patio area, especially during the darker season, or any additional improvements that might be necessary, particularly aisle area next to the addition. And none of that is shown on the plan, so I believe that does need to be reflected, in addition to its dark sky compliance. Natural resource protection, this is a unique feature of this property. It is in the urban exempt zone, so it's exempt from shoreland permitting, which is an important component. And obviously, because of the zoning with the zero setback, that's why this property can be built all the way up to the shore, basically the reference line of the shore. I do, however, recommend, and I've spoken to the applicant at some, a bit about this, some sort of stabilizing vegetation adjacent to the shorefront area. I've proposed some, some sort of simple blueberry or something to that effect. I think they're willing to install some plantings. The only caveat being that they do intend to keep an aisle open to a potential dock area, and I think that any such planting would leave some sort of gap for safe passage between the two areas. I think that seems appropriate. The bottom line is, I think there's some stabilization necessary. Proposed uses are permitted in the zone, it's compliant with all the provisions of the zoning ordinance. Solid waste disposal, I think we've heard tonight that there may be a change relative to that. There were no onsite dumpsters being proposed. However, it sounds like we'll have some sort of installation for solid waste disposal, rather than simply transporting solid waste to the solid waste facility on a regular basis. The applicant noted that a portion of this lot is adjacent to the floodplain, is actually in the floodplain. There are no structures proposed to be placed within that area. However, there is a section of pervious paver and retaining wall proposed adjacent to it. The applicant should confirm that Chapter 65, which is our floodplain management section, is being adhered to. There are some standards there, so simple certification from the applicant is necessary. The applicant has requested that the board not require a, any form of financial security. I have no comments on this beyond the fact that there are minimal site improvements being proposed, or is landscaping, but I will leave that fully to the, in the board's control. And I believe that whatever is agreed upon, the amount of that security could be a condition of, or determination of the amount of that security could be a condition of approval, should we get to that point in the process. Signage, I mentioned before, removal of an existing freestanding sign and construction of a freestanding sign, subject to sign permitting, so the sign itself is not part of this application, but the location is something the board should consider. Design review, renderings were not provided at the time of my review, but we have renderings now on the table for the board to review, so I think that should be part of the process moving forward. But certainly certification should be provided, that they are either adhering or not adhering to the voluntary design guidelines as they exist today. And with that lengthy review, that's all the comments I have in my review.
Okay, so, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing, but acknowledge that this application is not complete. But I, since these folks came, I want them to have an opportunity to, to speak, so if that's okay with everybody.
Just ask a question before you do that, Kathy. Where is the fuel, is, I don't know, you know, how this year-round business is heated, fueled, is there a fuel storage?
That is an excellent question that I do not know the answer to, I apologize. Yeah, I'm sorry, Paul, I don't.
Where do we store, where do we store fuel?
Okay, it's an underground tank.
Existing?
Yes.
Thank you. You want to vote on the not.
Well, I, yes.
You can, you can vote to continue the discussion of completeness to future meeting. That might be the best, best way to proceed, rather than ruling it incomplete, you may just want to continue the discussion.
Okay. Second, yeah, motion's been made, seconded all in favor of continuing the.
To a date, a date certain, I believe, would be.
Yes, to a date, date certain.
And that would be.
That's going to, I mean, our next meeting is next week.
Next meeting is the 20th.
If they can have everything, that's, is that okay with everyone?
That's good.
Is the applicant comfortable with? One week from today?
Minimal amount of delay.
Okay, okay, and so that's.
March 20th, oh, sorry, February 20th. February 20th at 7:00 PM at the Wolfro Town Hall.
Continue this until 2:20. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you, opposed? Oh, okay, so now I can go ahead and open the public hearing. So if any member of the public wants to comment on any of the issues that you've heard tonight, come on up and, but just keep in mind that we are going to continue this to get more details till next week.
Thank you, I'm Bob Hughes from the, I'm trustee of the 2224 North Main Street Trust. We had submitted some ideas to the owners when they first bought the property about the parking. The parking's our primary concern. We're, we're excited about the project, we're very positive about the project. But parking is, it's a fiasco down there, it always has been. Have certain concern, more concerns in the wintertime, but at the moment, are you planning on the same parking configuration with the full loopout? Because right now, we own the Pete's, the strip of land where everybody comes out of. Everyone goes into the Yum Yum through the one main parking lot, they could drive through our lot and out, which is a strip of land. I had submitted to the owners, and I, you know, I kind of wish they had met with us on the parking, is if we eliminate that strip, you now can take the cars and push them all the way over to the Walker and Barney line. I calculated it was at least a third more parking space. And what we would do is just go in Yum Yum and come out the Yum Yum, the, the existing entrance, so we get rid of one curb cut. You create a whole bunch more, because you have a lot of asphalt reserved for, for travel lanes, and it's kind of redundant. There's only four of us back there, so we could just block off the one area, and it, it picks up a lot more, I don't know. Our, our exit road, where everybody exits out of, and eliminate it, slide all the parking over. They wouldn't have to even angle park, I don't believe. Everyone would be able to pull in, turn out, and, and pull back out. Whenever there's a delivery truck there, nobody can get in. So that's a big problem. We don't mind the, you know, we don't mind having to go, we're going backwards quite a bit, we have to do it during the construction. But the problem is, all these angled cars, there's no line here, it's just all asphalt all the way across. So there's lots of times we're blocked completely from getting in. And I just think, I have a colored plan, maybe I could just send you, or we'd love to sit and just go over it, because I think there's a much better way to do this, and it picks up a lot more parking space. Because it's kind of silly to have two, two curb cuts, all that extra asphalt that's not being used. And then, in the wintertime, if you left it as is, that's a much bigger problem, because nobody's ever. Before, all we had to do was do the loops, but if you have to do the parking spots, you won't have any room for snow. So I think it's a much better solution, I'd be happy to work with them on it.
Is there a buy-sell situation that has to take place here in order for this to work?
I don't think so, because we own this, we own the strip of land, so I think we have an easement to come in, and I think the Yum Yum has easement to go out. I believe we could draft legal documents to, to just get that switched over. But it does, if you see it, I wish I had brought the colored plans, but I'll get them over to the planning office tomorrow. You literally pick up at least a third more parking space and room in here. Leave a lot more room for the truck that also has to pack in and sit there. There'd be, you'd have a much wider, wide-open space, you know, with the 14 feet, wouldn't even be an, an issue, so.
Bob, do you, do you know if that easement existed when the gas station was there? I mean, does it go?
I don't, I don't know the history of it.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah.
Come on, Kathy.
I can't remember.
Yeah, we'd love to work on some kind of parking solution, but I think we have a good one that's better for everybody.
Right.
I don't mean to put the applicant on the spot, but is that something that might be discussed? Or is this, obviously, some modification would be needed, but.
It's definitely something worthy of discussing. I'm not sure that 10 feet will change the dynamics too much, where we'd end up with perpendicular parking. I think there's still not quite enough room there. But it would take an easement, I would think, from 2224 Trust to the owners, and I'm not sure that can be done in a week. I mean, and we would also need the owner's consent.
Okay.
So that's another moving part.
Can they not come back and discuss the change? Can they not go proceed with the application as amended on the 20th, and then subsequently solve this parking problem, come back again for another review for parking?
Yeah, absolutely, it certainly could. This sounds like a longer-term solution I think we should be working on. But yeah, I think.
I think Mike makes a good point. I mean, the parking issue is, I wouldn't say it's moot. I mean, there's nothing that, you know, it's a, it's a grand-personed-in situation. So if it improves, that's good. We, so we could carve that out and have that as just a separate discussion. No, we just, we just make the whole thing, the application with assuming that you decide to go and abandon one parking place. We think that's a great idea, because you've got now more room in that aisle. We could approve the application, assuming with, based on that parking plan. And then you and Mr. Hughes get together, arrange the abandonment of the easement for some consideration, and then come back to us and say, look, we have this, we'd like to either redo the parking or not, whatever is most appropriate. Two stages, two steps.
What's important to me is that we would have permission to remove a parking space or two to make this whole thing work and get that aisle.
That's a conversation that this board will have with you, once we have a proper set of plans and we know what we're talking about, that's how I feel.
Not sure, or two, but I.
Sounds like we're negotiating.
It's, it's the direction I'm looking for.
Bob, did you have anything else other than, than that, that issue? Okay, so did.
I'll be brief, everyone, thank you. My name's Ron Branzetti, my wife Sarah and I are abutters of the Yum Yum Shop. I guess we're on the south side. We have the, the little cottage there, it's unit number five of our condo there. And Bob addressed the parking, and I won't talk about that, but our other concerns or questions involve the water runoff. Currently, the Yum Yum Shop does not have gutters, and when the, the rain is coming down, we experience it. And we've had a little bit of water in our basement. I've spoken to both Peters, and they've been very open and amenable to addressing that, but I just wanted to share that. And the other is, is lighting. And I think we're going to talk about that at the next meeting, is that right? Okay.
Yes, once, once they submit a plan, then, and they should get it in ahead of time, so people.
Yes, well, it'll need to be part of the packets for Friday of this week, so.
I agree with that.
Working late. It's going to be in for Friday.
Thank you all.
Yeah, anything, any other issues? You're all set? Okay, great.
No, I think there's two things here, if I heard. One, lighting plan is required, might be a nice idea to have a cup of coffee. And dealing with water runoff might be also a nice idea to have a cup of coffee, so that, you know, that it's more of a completed effort, thank you.
Okay, so are, are you folks clear on what's needed? I mean, we need, we need more of the drawings that you submitted, the waiver forms with the justification, that you did include that. What else?
Well, I'll be giving you a new, new package.
Okay.
Five prints and 15, 11 by 17, so all that good stuff.
Right.
Right.
Including lighting.
Say again?
Including lighting.
Yes.
Yeah. Other, John?
Yeah, I'd like to back up Mr. Branzetti's comment about the sheet flow. That's been on my concern here, because obviously, yeah, if you give them the luxury of building out there with a patio and stuff, they got to be able to corral that and bring it back to themselves and filter it and get it back to appropriate place, in my mind. Just, it just doesn't make any sense for allow it to roll right off and keep going to the lake.
Yeah, one, one question I have, and this is a question I think I'll address with the applicant maybe after the meeting, but whether or not the pervious patios actually do more filtering, filtering and retention than what's there right now? I'm not sure of the answer to that question, but.
Well, there's a certain, there's a certain amount of time that it takes for the water to seep into that three-eighths of an inch crack. And then, you know, the question comes to, do you maintain that permeable surface? Which is that aggregate on top? I mean, you get fines and you get ice cream and you get cups and containers and, and residual, and it all floats over that, and over time there, I mean, it becomes compromised and just. and it all floats over that, and over time there, I mean, it becomes compromised, just naturally.
So your concern is, is for that patio, how do we assure that we're not having-
Yeah, like you go down-
-excessive runoff, or runoff period to the lake?
Yeah, you go to a development or something, and you see down the side of the road, somebody put a bumper, because in order to put the development in, the person building the road had to keep the water from running into the other guy's property. The property that we're talking about is the lake, and Mr. Branzetti's property. I mean, it's, we're listening to what the people are telling us, I have to act on that.
Okay, and Matt suggested some plantings also, so-
Yes, those are the easy ones.
Okay. Okay, so any other issues?
I have, I was having trouble following your review words. Is there an issue we need to deal with, with the patio out front?
Not the patio front, the planting-
Are you cool with that?
Yeah, I'm very-
We're actually taking out hardscape, we're putting in pervious surface, so we're good with that.
I think the patio out front is great. It was only on the rear patio, putting some sort of planting between the edge of the patio and the water, to do a little bit of stabilization and filtration, hopefully. So that's sort of what I was getting at, because there's very limited area there, based on what they're proposing, but I think we can do something.
And what's your, what's the issue that, kind of in the back of your mind, you were thinking about? That the sign's going to come down, but it's going to go someplace else, and that's something that, what's the issue there?
So the only, the only component of site plan review for signage that the planning board, in my opinion, has review over is the location of the sign, obviously. So they've shown a new location on the plan, I think you can comment on that location. In another situation, there might be a site distance issue based on where the sign is proposed. I don't think that's a concern here, but you can comment on where that sign is being proposed to be installed. What's not included is, the sign will be 10 feet high, 2 feet high. That information is not included here, it'll be handled under the permit.
Well, that's a subsequent conversation.
But you can comment on the location of the sign, and whether or not you think there's any concern relative to access, or anything of that nature, so.
Well, particularly if this, and again, who knows where the sign ultimately winds up? If this, if this idea of actually expanding the parking lot and eliminating a curb cut, that could inform where the sign should or should not be from a visibility to the street, you know, coming out of the parking lot, looking-
Yeah, I mean, the sign is shown on the corner right now, that landscape there, yeah.
You know, I don't know where it should go, but, you know, new data has suggested that maybe we would want to comment to make sure that a person in a car coming out of that parking lot does not have to kind of creep out into the street to look to make sure that they're not going to get clipped.
And there's also a sign shown on the building.
Correct, correct, yeah. The only reason I didn't comment on that one is because I think that's purely a permitting issue, whereas the freestanding sign is, you know, a site component.
The freestanding sign is proposed for, right there in the northwest corner.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, all right, then, we're going to continue this item until, it'll be first on the agenda, 7 o'clock on February 20th. And thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you for doing this.
And Bob, you'll get that parking plan to somebody, but if you could get it to Matt, that would be, be good. Okay, all right, thank you, folks. Okay, let's see, the next item. Let's go to the, you want to go to the architectural design standards? Then we can do the minutes quickly after that. Okay.
Okay.
All right, good.
One moment here.
Okay, architectural design standards, you want to?
Yes, and I will count on some other board members to aid me during my review of what we did here, if I miss anything. There are a few items in your packet this evening, the first of which is this table right here, which is a comparison document. It's a verbatim comparison of what is in these two documents. The first document are the design standards that were presented to the board several months ago, in a draft format for review. The design standards we reviewed with the EDC, those design standards. The other column here are the existing design guidelines, the voluntary design guidelines that we actually talked about in the context of one of the projects this evening. What I tried to do here is compare how those two work together. And I hope that that was, in some ways, helpful to you. The other item you see is a selection from the existing design guidelines, the voluntary design guidelines that exist right now. And there are a few modifications I want to point out, and they are the only modifications to this document from what exists today, that the board has been using. One is the design standards label up on the left-hand side, and then the Section 173-19B reference. Section 173-19B is the section in the site plan regulations where this document lives as it exists, or would live as it exists, or as it's proposed today, I'm sorry, as it's proposed today. So that is where this would be referenced in the site plan review regulations. There are no other changes on page one.
Where does this document exist right now?
It exists as part of the ordinance in the site plan review regulations.
I looked up 173-19B, and I got like a paragraph, but I don't have any of this stuff. I've never, I have never seen this before in all the years I've been on town boards, the first time ever.
This was put together in 95, 1995?
I'll say, editorially, it's a really good document, and I like it a lot. But I would have liked to have known it existed 10 years ago. Why didn't?
Not to scare you, not to scare you, but this has existed and been used, I believe, for 20 years.
Well, I'll tell you, I've been given zoning books by the ZBA, and whatever boards I've been on in this town, and I have never, ever seen these before, ever.
Mike, they've been keeping you in the dark.
Well, regardless of whether I've seen them or not, I plead ignorance, and I'm awfully sorry. But I guess my base point is, I like these standards.
Okay.
As standards.
So again, I'm going to bring you through sort of just the edits really quick, and then I'll talk about why we're even looking at this, sort of the basic, the basic, Paul, do you have a question?
We got to talk about this, too?
Yes, yes, I just want to, I just want to quickly take you through what this document is. So those two edits on the first page. Moving through now, jumping to page four of this document, you'll see a process chart. It's a very old-looking chart on the left-hand side. I want to note that in the original process chart in the document as it exists, there's another item next to site plan review at the top, and that's building permit. I've removed that, because this document is intended only for site plan review applications, so just keep that in mind. That said, there are a few edits over to the right-hand side of page four. There's some bolding that suggests added language, and then there's some strike-through content that I've removed, as I don't think it applies if this document exists only as part of the site plan review regulations.
Fine.
Aside from that, there's only one other change to this document, and that is these numbers that you'll see, starting on page five. You'll see just a number two next to new and infill buildings. And then subsequent, subsequent to that, on page six, you'll see a number three next to the next general statement. This leads all the way up to number 18 on page 17. The reason I've done this is because if these were to be adopted as regulations, you'd need some sort of codification of these, as they are stated here. You can't have one long run-on, because you wouldn't be able to waive any portions of it. So I've tried to just add some numbers, so that there's some sort of code to it. Now, the reasoning behind this is based on the work of the subcommittee, and also some discussions with the public, including the meeting with the EDC, where it was suggested that the existing voluntary design guidelines reflected a lot of the community priorities around architectural design, and they captured kind of the essence of it pretty well. So rather than working with the design standards that the planning board had proposed recently, returning to this document as it exists now, and determining whether or not this can be very lightly modified and incorporated as a more concrete design guideline document. Does that, does that make sense to everybody?
I think it's a lot, it'd be a lot easier to sell this document to the town, since we've got so much support in crafting it in the first place.
Right, it exists, there's a lot of community input that went into it.
Best kept secret.
Best kept secret? And, but I will say, you know, during my review tonight, it is one of the items in my site plan review memos, the compliance with the voluntary design guidelines.
And they're voluntary, and everyone says no.
Right, and you have the option literally to say, thanks but no thanks, as they exist right now. So the proposal, to go a step further, is to make these a regulation under the site plan review regulations.
That could be waived.
It could be waived.
The only, the only one I have, I have a question on page 13. We don't permit gas stations in our town anymore.
Well...
We don't permit gas stations in the town anymore.
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Why do we have, you know, I don't know, I mean, it's a nice, it's a pretty picture.
Maybe it's- Yeah, maybe we want to do renovations.
Sorry, Vaughn?
We have a number of them that could be replaced.
Thank you.
So, oh, okay, could be replaced, meaning refitted?
Let's say that, well, no, let's say they wanted to tear down Three Sisters and do something new that was also a gas station.
Yeah.
We do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that, yeah, it's sort of an interesting item. The only reason it was in here really at this point is because we tried to keep everything in here as a starting place, so that we weren't removing any content by choice, basically. So this is, one thing I do want to point out, as I noted on top of this comparison document, is that we have removed several bigger sections from this, as they exist today. And those are pertaining specifically to residential development. They don't fit here. And those are the sign section, which we have a sign ordinance for. The shoreline protection section, which we have a shoreline protection zone, we have permanent for. Municipal facilities, which was basically a sentence saying that the town should be a shining example of what we talk about in the regulations, and I think we strive to do that anyway. Residential streets, which is residential and sidewalks. Cluster development, which is covered under subdivision regulations and other portions of the ordinance. Those sections are not included in this packet that I presented tonight, but everything else is.
Can we go through a couple of these?
The, of the comparison items?
On page two, you know, as I read it, it says screen mechanical and utility. It says screen exterior trash and storage areas, under existing guidelines. But if you look to the left, we say, hey, hide the utility and mechanical stuff. But what are we going to do about trash and all that other? Is that?
So the good news here is that the existing guidelines, which are on the right-hand side, actually are covered. If the board moves in the direction of adopting the existing guidelines, you'd be covered. Under our, under the reg, the design standard?
For both.
No, we're basically saying that the old design guidelines, standards, sorry, the design standards that the subcommittee drafted-
And you folks looked at?
We looked at and met with the EDC about, we're saying, those are on hold and sort of off the table right now.
This EDC, the EDC of 1995?
No, 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 I'm just, I'm pointing out the fact that we had a meeting with the EDC about a set of design standards that the subcommittee had drafted. Those design standards were tabling, basically, at this point in time, and moving in the direction of adopting the existing design guidelines with these slight modifications I've shown here. So the good news is the trash will be covered under the existing design guidelines, that's in there.
So the confusion is that these are now called design standards.
Yes, that, that is-
The signs on the right.
Yeah, that's probably where I go.
And I'm sorry that I've done that, but it was-
Language.
I was trying to present it as it would appear if it were adopted, so.
Vaughn, so help me out, I was reading, I was reading this thing that says "design standard", and then I was looking over here, and I was seeing "design standard".
Apologies for that.
No, no, it's not an apology, I just, I wanted to make sure I wasn't nuts.
So the thing on the left called "design standards" were the ones that we had proposed, that were completely new and different.
Yeah, I got it.
The design guidelines are now going to be called standards if it gets adopted.
So one more, one more question.
If I have to complicate that any-
So we're going to, we're going to move on the ones that are on the right, those are the ones we like.
Yes.
We think we like.
It's the old ones.
I like them.
It's the old ones come new.
So, okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to watch the bouncing ball here.
The ones on the left, we're setting aside.
Ones on the right, smiley face.
Yeah, and the only, the only intent here is, I wanted to make sure that we captured everything we felt that was important, and the new ones that we put together in our old guidelines. I want to make sure there's not anything that's, you know, blatantly missing.
And it seems like-
And I think they match up pretty well.
Yeah, I think so too.
Your word voluntary to start off with, that would have to be removed. That would change, right, that was just, that's just as they exist right now.
Are we going to, I'm sorry, are we going to enlist the community?
Well, that would be, we wanted to come to you folks first and see what your reaction is, and then, then go to the, yes, to it.
We need to have a public input session, or some sort of, you know, public meeting to talk about this. It's not a public hearing itself.
Vaughn, if I could ask a question of Vaughn, please? In the second page, on the design standards, which really are, it's not this, it's something else. There was a, you had a thing down here, this is exposed block, corrugated steel sheet, metal plastic, all that stuff are prohibited. So that, I just made a mental note to myself, because you at one point said something about, you know, Frank Gehry came to town, we'd probably-
We could waive it.
We could waive it. Since that, but just so that I'm clear, that, that stuff on the left is not what we're going to consider adopting. We're going to consider adopting the stuff on the right, which could allow us to have somebody who might want to show what corrugated steel building. Gets to, which gets to our friend at the Pickering House saying, you know, the green, the green steel building may be not preferred now, but in 10 years it might be.
Yeah, it's a, it's a point.
We just need to, you know, keep our, keep our heads around that, okay, good.
Okay, so do you folks think we should go ahead and take this out to the public, see what their reaction is?
I think we need to, are we going to get rid of this table? Before we do that, because this is really confusing now.
Just do this.
Yeah, I, that, I only wanted that for you all.
Well, and Mike-
No, I thought it was excellent, that was excellent, the exercise, but the-
Jeez.
Mike could ask for something, so that-
This is the problem.
No, no, I totally agree, and I'll honestly say, I probably should have used a different title there.
We lost control of the meeting, Kevin.
But yes, that, this table will be for, for your eyes only, even though it is a public document. It will not be part of how we present this to the public, because they're going to get so confused, because it is confusing.
Right.
And they'll start arguing about little bits and pieces in that left-hand column.
But this was just so that you could actually see that we managed to include everything.
I have a request, and I know it's a major change. And that is, I'm so used to having staples in the upper left-hand corner, and flipping over a page and seeing it not upside down.
About me? I was going to be unhappy.
I don't know, but I'm just looking, it's just an awkward document.
We were concerned about it.
No, I agree.
Past the mic test, we were practically a home run.
If you go like this, if you try to look normal-
Too late Kathy, I need to go home now.
You'd have that right to know.
Did the, I included some language here, actually showing what amendments would be needed in the site plan review regulations. Does that make sense?
Hang on a second.
Everybody?
Meeting memo.
I just included-
This one?
Yeah, the one pager.
I know that you had another comment, Paul, but-
That's fine.
That's all right, I just, you're talking about the architectural standards paragraph?
Well, specifically, this, this language down here, which is in the site plan right now, those are the modifications that would need to take place long-term if we moved in this direction, to make everything work together. One thing I do want to point out, too, is that the existing voluntary design guidelines would remain in place, independent of what we're talking about doing here, which makes it-
Well, well, look, I think the committee needs to get together again and-
Talk about that issue?
Well, and clean it up.
It sounds confusing, so it's going to become-
I mean, this is, we don't have to do much, just how we're going to present it.
Well, I think as long as we're not comparing the standards that have now gone away, with anything, it's not confusing.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it basically just, you have to at that point say it's going to be a mandatory part of the site plan review process, but it can be waived.
Okay, there's, there's one thing from the modified things that I would like to have in the existing design guidelines, which are associated with green roofs. In other words, we could add that as something that would be permissible. And at least if it's mentioned, then people may start thinking about it.
Right, and the committee has been committed to keeping this as consistent with the old standards as possible, but I think a small modification like that could be made- But I think a small modification like that could be made reasonably.
Well, that's opening it up and encouraging it to something which is new.
Yeah, I think it's a good suggestion, so I think that's... I'm supportive of that.
I'm supportive of that, too. I just don't want to change it too much.
No, no, but that's the only change that I would have, which to me was a very good statement by our town.
What are we doing about green roofs now? We're not making them mandatory, are we?
No, 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 no.
It says, "Green roofs, including those that are vegetated, incorporating green energy technology, are encouraged, but not required."
That could be the last...
We don't want to turn people away from solar or anything.
Oh, definitely not.
You're not requiring it.
Okay, so we'll move ahead then?
Well, I think another meeting of the committee and then move to a public forum.
Now Brad participating.
Say that again.
Without you participating, right?
Why?
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 Usually the sign...
Yeah, that's right. When we're talking about the signs, we kept that part of it out.
Yes, correct, so Brad is a full participant.
So you can participate.
Okay, well, great.
And I think you really did a great job with comparison, and I thank you. It's just the title that was...
The title.
I fixed it. I just took it and ripped it in half. There you go. I got my little one-pager.
It was really well done. It was well done.
Okay, could we just do the minutes and then adjourn? Is that okay with everyone? The January 16th, 2018 minutes?
Move to approve? Be happy to move to approve.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Are we done?
Okay, we can adjourn.
Thank you. Move to adjourn.
Okay, but don't forget, we're meeting again next week. How could we forget?
I look forward to it so much.